I'll go ahead and call our joint meeting to order tonight with the Abingdon Town Council and certainly the Washington County Service Authority. And before I get into the agenda, it's an honor to have everybody here. We should get together more often, so we've got to find reasons to get together, but it's so nice to see everybody. You work and you see these names and we work together sort of in different silos, so it's just nice to have all of you together. And I'm honored to chair this meeting along with you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly Mr. Miller from the Service Authority. So with that, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for the Washington County Board of Supervisors and let the record reflect, Madam Secretary, that we do have a quorum with all seven supervisors present. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Wayne Craig, the mayor of the town of Abingdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, please come to order. I'm going to call a roll. Al Bradley.
Here.
Eric Webb.
Here.
Donald Quitch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Patterson.
Here.
And I'm the mayor and I'm here.
All right, thank you.
So we have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. And with that, I'll recognize Mr. Dwayne Miller, the chairman of the Washington County Service Authority. Okay, so the joint meeting is called to order. With that, the next item on the agenda is invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. And for that, I'll recognize Mr. Eddie Copenhaver. Mr. Copenhaver?
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight as three different groups, all working together for the best of the Washington County students. Thank you for this very, very beautiful day. Lord, we ask you to remember our men and women, our women in the service and their families, because some of them right now are going through a really terrible thing. Please look after our fire and EMS people and along with their police department, because you know, those are the people that protect us and want you to look after them. And last, we want you to look after our poor and our sick, because they need you probably as much as anybody. And we ask all of you to come in.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the Christian state, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Copenhaver. The next item on the agenda is an approval of the meeting agenda for the Washington County Board of Supervisors. So with that, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Good move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Copenhaver and a second by Mr. Rush. Discussion, all in favor, motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda is our joint meeting. And again, this is a joint meeting between the Washington County Board of Supervisors, the town of Abingdon, and the Washington County Service Authority to discuss the amendment to an existing wastewater service agreement. And so with that, initially here, I'll turn it over to Mr. Berry and also want to recognize Mr. Robbie Cornet, who's here with the Service Authority, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on this side of the podium.
I know. It's kind of unusual to see you over there. It's like you're in trouble or something. You're on the other side.
I probably am, no.
Your name for any organization you might represent.
Washington County.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm going to give you a brief overview, but the Washington County Board of Supervisors, town of Abingdon, and Service Authority, for about seven months with a working group, has met the chairman, the vice chair, the mayor and the vice chair of the town of Abingdon. The staff, Mr. Cornet, have talked about the current 2010 sewer agreement that the town, the county, and the Service Authority have. The amendment before you is the First Amendment to extend that, but basically, this is a great example of partnership between the two communities and two localities to provide a better service for our citizens and for economic development. So we provide this First Amendment to you all for discussion tonight. And before you get into the discussion between the three groups, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cornet to talk about the operational pieces of this amendment and what the impact is to the Service Authority and the relationship with the town of Abingdon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, members of boards and councils. A pleasure to be here tonight. For the council members that may not know me, Robbie Cornet, general manager with the Service Authority, and it's been a pleasure, as Jason said, just reiterate, the working group that we've had over the last seven months to craft the amendment that's before you this evening. Go back to the 2010 agreement for just a moment and reflect a little bit on what that agreement has meant to Washington County, to the Service Authority, and reflect a little bit on maybe how that has impacted the town. But since the 2010 agreement, we have been fortunate to construct a little more than $15.3 million worth of wastewater infrastructure to serve existing county residents and businesses with public wastewater service for the very first time. 386 residents now have wastewater service that did not have it before this agreement. So taking that a step further, we also now have, thanks to the collaborative efforts of a lot of different folks, a half million gallons a day of wastewater treatment capacity at Oak Park for expanding or new business and industry. Again, something that in 2010, we did not have. Bring ourselves up to late last year, the Service Authority with hard work of a lot of different folks were able to secure $18.5 million of funding for a wastewater project that would extend the full length of Route 11 Lee Highway between Oak Park and the city of Bristol, and also involve infrastructure on Halls Bottom Road and Jonesboro Road, basically between the town of Abingdon and the city of Bristol. Of that $18.5 million project, $9.1 million is grant. Don't know this for sure, but the folks at USDA Rural Development indicated that this may be the largest water and sewer grant that they have ever issued in Virginia. So if it's certainly, if it's not the largest, it's one of the largest. To make this project feasible, the 2010 agreement needs to be amended to expand the service area. The service area that is identified in the current agreement only goes to about Halls Bottom Road if we're going down Route 11. But to extend this sewer service to other existing residents and businesses, we need to amend this agreement. Now, with this project, 111 existing residents and businesses would receive public sewer service for the first time. And this project becomes the backbone for serving a lot of neighborhoods and subdivisions along Route 11, particularly, and I know Mr. Ball will recognize a lot of these names, but Lowry Hills, Preston Hills, Evergreen Hills, Woodstone Estates, and others. We've had a lot of interest in public wastewater service there for years. I have attended at least three homeowners association meetings with Lowry Hills over the last 10 years, and they are really excited and interested in public sewer service. This project is, if you will, it's the conveyance system that will enable us to then start working into these neighborhoods to provide the service. Once we do that, there's 731 additional existing residences and businesses that will have access to public sewer service for, again, for the first time. What's that mean for the town? When we complete this project, that's about $290,000 a year of additional wastewater revenue to the town that right now they don't have. And that, over time, will grow if we are fortunate, and I think in time we will be to serve these neighboring communities that will add another $50,000 in annual revenue to the town through their wastewater system, bringing the total to $340,000 annually going Can't pass up the opportunity to also say, again, coming back to Oak Park Center for Business and Industry, with a higher volume, say, half million gallon a day water and sewer user, that not only means revenue for Service Authority's wastewater system, but would again increase the wastewater revenue to the town by about $460,000 a year. So if all that were to occur, that's about $800,000 a year in new wastewater revenue to the town. So just kind of looking down the road and thinking about that. So the amendment that is before you tonight, I think is, Jason already pointed out and should be in your agenda packets, but it amends the service area, expands it to include the area where the project funding has been secured. It also establishes the floor, if you will, for the rate of $2.50 a thousand, basically where it is today. Among other things that maybe weren't as clear in the 2010 agreement that were clarified here is the Service Authority's role in participating financially with the update of the town's local limits for the Wolf Creek Water Reclamation Facility, the compliance with the town's pre-treatment regulations, which is part of the 2010 agreement, as pertains to significant industrial users, be it Oak Park, Bristol-Washington County Industrial Park, or other areas that we might serve. And our support, be it financially or with resources, is clarified in this amendment. So with that, I'll pause.
And I guess the matter of housekeeping, the way that we're going to do this is, we'll begin with the Service Authority, Chairman Miller, and you'll have an opportunity to have, because you're in open session, you're in a called meeting, an opportunity to discuss and have comments and ultimately take an action if you desire to approve the service agreement. And I believe we have a joint resolution as well. Once you do that, then the town, Mr. Mayor, will do that as well and let you complete your actions. And again, assuming you have an action, then we'll turn it over to the board supervisors and we'll basically do the same. If all three bodies approve the agreement, then we're good, because all three of us are parties to this agreement. So if that's the case, then at that point, then Service Authority, you can adjourn, and Mr. Mayor, you all can adjourn as well. And then we'll have Mr. Cornet, of course, Mr. Berry, and everybody else available, also council as well, for any questions. So is that good, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman? Okay. So with that, I'll turn it over. I keep saying, Mr. Chairman, we're so formal. I just want to say, Dwayne, I'll turn it over to you, buddy.
Is there any questions, comments, or Robbie?
I'd just like to say, I know this has been a long time coming.
Is that microphone on, Mr. Berry?
Let me see. There you go.
Talk to you a little louder.
Okay. This has been something, been a long time coming. I know this area, it's been a lot of work for 30-plus years to get sewer in this area. So we appreciate all the work that the staff has done and county staff and the staff of the town to pull this agreement together. Appreciate all the work that's been done on that. With that, entertain a motion to accept the First Amendment to the wastewater service agreement among the town of Abingdon, Washington County.
Service Authority and Washington County, Virginia.
So move.
Move. Motion by Mr. Taylor and second, Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. 5-0, motion passes.
Chair. Counselor, you've had an opportunity to review the agreement and you've been briefed on the agreement. I'll entertain a motion, the matter.
Mr. Taylor, question to the board, will we accept and approve revised and expanded sewer service here at, or the sewer service agreement?
Motion by Mr. Bradley to approve the amendment to the agreement.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Patterson. Is any discussion or questions for Mr. Cornet? Okay, I'm going to call a roll. It's our tradition to call a roll. Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Mr. Quitch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Patterson.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Thank you, sir. All right. What's the pleasure of the board? I make a motion, will we accept the agreement? Okay, so we have motion by Mr. Ball. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Pennington. Discussion, question, comments? All in favor? Motion carries 7-0. All righty, with that, let me also just express my gratitude to Service Authority staff, Robbie, I'm just calling everybody by first names, done with this, all this, and team, and then.
Mr. Videm, I forgot to mention.
That's right. You may want to introduce him, but thank you as well for the town, for your support.
Mr. Videm, would you please stand up? Mr. Videm is our interim town manager, and he'll be with us until May the 10th. He's really helped us out and we're proud of him, and we certainly appreciate his work on this matter, and we appreciate his service to the town.
Certainly do. I think that was one of your goals, you wanted to get this done before you moved on. So it's part of your legacy, but thank you all again, thank you for your support. So with that, Mr. Miller?
Motion to adjourn, so move. Thank Mr. Orfield.
Counselor, where's your man?
All right. And with that, I will take a 10-minute recess. We'll go ahead and reconvene. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And at this time, we'll hear the public comment, for those of you that are registered to speak, but also even if you're not registered, I'll go ahead and at the end of the list, once we've gone through the list, I'll give everyone the opportunity if you wish to speak. So as I call your name, please come back to the podium. And it sounds a little repetitive, but you'll have to, for the record, we'll have to ask you to restate your name, your mailing address, and any organization you might represent. Also, excuse me, each speaker will have five minutes for comments, beginning with a green light that's right there on the podium. When you have one minute remaining at the four-minute mark, I believe the green light begins blinking, and then 30 seconds remaining, you're going to have a yellow light appear. After that, at the end of the five minutes, of course, the red light will go off. And then I want to remind the speakers that during a public comment, per our bylaws, supervisors are not to engage or address any questions. Oftentimes, we get asked hypotheticals during public comment, and we are not, per our bylaws, allowed to engage, and it appears like we're being disrespectful. That's not the case. It's just understand that we were not to engage or respond. So with that, I'll call the first speaker, and Ms. Kathy Baldwin. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Baldwin, and my mailing address is post office box 1413 in Abingdon, but I live in Glade. I'm here to speak in support of our public library system. I know that if you would like to visit the library, a staff member would be glad to show you around, to highlight some of the services that the library provides, and to answer any questions that you might have. I moved to Abingdon from Russell County in 1978. At that time, the Abingdon Library was much more well-stocked than the public library in Lebanon, which was housed in the basement of the courthouse. I grew up in Massachusetts using the library continuously, and I was happy to have access to this, Abingdon Library, when I moved here. I owned and operated an independent bookstore in Abingdon between 1985 and 1990. First, it was named Books at Court in Maine, and then we moved to the Greenway Trig Building and renamed ourselves Main Street Books. I only kept the bookstore for five years, but when I went back to teaching, I sold the store to Gary and Marie Frank, and they continued to operate it for, I think, 15 years more. It was a magnet for people who wanted to own or to discuss new books and ideas. At least one of the book groups we started at the store is still in existence. Now, of course, we don't have a bookstore in Washington County, but we have a wonderful library. I have found that most books that I read about, or hear about, or on national public radio, or in a newspaper, are stocked in our library. And if the book is not in the Washington County system, our library can borrow it from one of the other Southwest Virginia library systems, which belong to the same consortium. If there's a new book that I've read excellent reviews of, but that isn't already in the system, I can submit information about the book to the library, and the librarian, who is in charge of that category of the collection, will consider whether it might benefit our library to stock it. Often, they do. I still buy books, but I use the library more. I mostly use the library for print books, but many of my friends also use the library for audiobooks, movies, music, newspapers, journals and magazines, book groups, and for the many opportunities the library offers through Sunday with Friends, to speak with authors and to hear them talk about their work. To me, the library is invaluable. I and many of the other residents of the county are now at the stage of life when we don't want to buy a lot more books, but we don't want to stop learning or to lose touch with what is new in literature or nonfiction. Among the most important responsibilities that a community has to its residents are education, access to the truth, and access to knowledge about the wider world. Our library does all three. I volunteer at the library and help with the book sales, but volunteers can only do so much to keep the library up to date, and volunteers cannot raise money for salaries. I hope that you will listen to those who speak at board meetings about the value the library holds for them. Most of the public libraries' funds come from the county. When you consider how to spend our money next year and in the years to come, please realize that our library system gives much to the community, and please support it at a level that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sue Ann Morris. Welcome.
My name is Sue Ann Morris. I'm at 278 Henderson Court, Abingdon. Good evening to the members of the Board of Supervisors of Washington County and to the citizens in attendance tonight. As again I've said, my name is Sue Ann Morris, and I've been a resident of this county since 1966. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the county library. I read recently, and I quote, "Civilization is a series of agreements about what is good for everyone enforced by laws," end quote. Certainly, the library is good for everyone, and you have the authority to pass laws to support the library financially. I taught in the public schools of Washington County for 29 years, and my students and I utilize the services of the library to supplement the school library, and in doing so, we were exposed to the many services that are offered other than checking out books to read for pleasure and for research, for projects and reports. And those services continue to grow. For the past 16 years, I have worked full-time as a realtor, and in that capacity, I worked with one person who moved from North Carolina to Washington County because of, number one, affordable housing; number two, educational opportunities such as the college for older adults and the excellent public library; number three, the Barta Theater. Another person bought property in town last week because she would be able to walk to the library, walk to the farmer's market, and walk to the Barta Theater. A second-century B.C. Roman playwright, Platus, stated, and I quote, "You must spend money to make money," end quote. And I interpret that to mean that if we want to continue to make progress, we must be willing to finance what is needed. If that means raising my property taxes, then do so. The main library and the branches should be supported by our funds and our presence as we continue to move forward in Washington County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Howard, I believe it's McElroy.
That's correct.
Great, great. Welcome, sir.
Never can remember what pocket I put it in. My name is Howard McElroy, and I'm here with my wife, Heidi McElroy. We live at 160 Crestview Drive in Abingdon, Washington County. We have lived here for the last 42 years. We are voters, residents, and taxpayers in Washington County and Abingdon, both, of course. We moved here in 1977 from Falls Church in northern Virginia. So neither of us was born here. We call ourselves Washington Countians and Abingdonians by choice. We fled northern Virginia because of the traffic problems. We couldn't get anywhere in any reasonable length of time to be part of a small town. Small towns, as you know, don't have those kind of traffic problems. We occasionally have it at Rush Hour on Cummings Street, but that's about it. And when we moved here, the first thing, of course, we did, we had our first infant child. We found a place to live, an apartment to live in. And I think the second thing we did, we all went down to the library and got library cards, because that's an important part of our lives, was in northern Virginia and it is here in Washington County. I'm here today to thank and to compliment you on our library system. The services that we have used most in the library system, I could probably go to the website and read to you all the services that are provided, but you can do that yourselves. What I'd like to tell you about what services have been important to us as a family. One of them that's came by recently with our retirements in the last few years, we have been part of college for older adults that's held at the Higher Education Center, and various local professors or knowledgeable people that are not just professors will give classes three times a year, three sessions, fall, winter, and spring. And they're remarkable. They don't have, you don't have to be part of any homework, no papers to write, nothing like that, and most of them give out bibliographies. Well, bibliography leads you to the library if you want to know more information about it, and there are a lot of people from Abingdon and into Washington County who go to COA. There are meeting rooms. I've met clients in my former life as an attorney here in town in law practice, and I've met any number of groups of clients in the meeting room at the library. They're available. Other library purposes take precedence, but if they've got a slot open, you can reserve the library for your use in meeting, especially with bigger groups. Ancestry.com is a service that they provide. My wife has gotten interested in genealogy and is beginning to pursue that. There are books online. When we travel by auto, we get something online and plug it into the CD player, I guess. When we travel by auto, we get something online and plug it into the CD player, I guess. Now you've got to then translate it into a memory stick and plug it in your system if you have a new car, but those have been very helpful. And lastly, but not least, our, we have three children, and all three of them have spent lots of time in the library, especially when they're younger. Not only as the school students, they spend some time in the library, but especially young children, and the reading programs and storytelling programs that are provided by the library are a huge hit. I'd like to last thank our director, your director, Charlotte Parsons, and all the employees of the library. They are most helpful and most friendly. They're not your mind's eye of you, a government employee who doesn't, who doesn't want to be there and doesn't want to help anybody. They are very helpful and a pleasure to work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak during public comment? Okay. If not, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is a special recognition and presentation on travel matters in Washington County. And so we've got a few guests. We have Ms. Jane Dearing, and we have, looks like Amanda Livingston. Did I say, is it Livingston or Livingston?
Yes, Livingston, thank you. Yes, again, my name's Amanda Livingston. I am the Marketing Manager for the Abingdon Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I want to thank you for your time today, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Supervisors. We are really excited to tell you about an event that we have coming up, May ninth, in recognition of National Travel and Tourism Week. I don't need to tell you, we all intuitively know that tourism is big business in Washington County. We do have some numbers actually to support that, which Jane is going to share with you. But just one number to throw at you, in 2017, which is the latest year for which we have data, we know that tourism, direct tourism spending in Washington County was over $106 million in 2017, and that is not the town of Abingdon, that is the county as a whole. And so that is really exciting. We, we want to celebrate that, we want to grow that for Abingdon as well as the county. And so when we decided to mark this national week, which, which is a sort of an opportunity for the tourism industry nationally to celebrate the economic impact of travel and tourism as well as the impact it has on the visitors' lives itself, we decided, with the advice of our Tourism Advisory Committee, to really focus on the frontline employees. These are the folks who have the direct interaction with the visitors. They are your servers in the restaurants, they are hotel staff, housekeeping, gas station attendants. These are the frontline employees who really can make or break a visit to Washington County. They work really hard, they deserve celebrating, and also, we feel that if we invest in them and give them the recognition and the support and the pride in our industry that they deserve, that that's going to increase, just increase our reputation as a welcoming and exciting place to visit. So I am here to tell you a little bit about an event and then to extend an invitation to you directly that we, we hope you will attend. Thursday, May ninth, is the first Thursday Jams concert of our summer concert series. And we have decided, in addition to the regularly scheduled concert, that we will be holding a VIP tent for these frontline employees. It will be ticketed, it will be invitation-only, it will have complimentary food and drink. We are working with local businesses, Wolf Hills Brewing, we are working with our partners to provide a really VIP experience, door prizes, and we hope your presence as well, because we want it not to be more than just a great party. We want it to be an opportunity for them to see that their elected officials recognize their efforts and the importance of this industry as a whole. It's a very scattered industry. These are mom-and-pop shops, they're individual hotels, but if they were all gathered under one roof, it would be a major, major employer, and it is a major, major employer in our county. So I hope you will mark your calendars, save the date. We will be extending an official invitation through Mr. Berry in the coming weeks, but Thursday, May ninth, at 6:30 p.m. at Thursday Jams, and we really hope to see you there. And thank you for, for doing what you do to support tourism in Washington County. And we have some additional figures we do want to share with you just to recap what's in your packet, so I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Tourism.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing us some time on your schedule, and thank you for what you do for Washington County. As Amanda mentioned, $103 million in tour, direct tourism spending every year. These numbers are collected by the Research Department of Virginia Tourism Corporation. And if you're wondering how you get to that figure, it's an index of gasoline, theater, groceries, everything that you might do on a vacation, it's a portion of those dollars, and it adds up very significantly. Amanda also noted the major employment. There's about 1,200 jobs in Washington County supported by tourism, and it generates $23 million in payroll. So when we say we're going to celebrate the frontline people, please understand, these are the people delivering the hospitality that we are so famous for. When travel riders come, they almost never fail to mention the outpouring of hospitality, and it comes from these workers. What we also know is that when they refer people to a restaurant, or to a theater, or to an activity, they are looking for the same high quality that they are delivering. So our job is to bring people into Abingdon and Washington County, but they deliver the experience. It's a crucial partnership, and they deliver. So when we say we're celebrating the frontline, we are celebrating the people who deliver Washington County hospitality and keep them coming back. I do want to say as an aside, Vice Chair Mays, that thank you. You posted that you did some of your Saturday errands via our urban pathway. That's exactly what we want. We want more people walking up and down the streets, so I did want to take a second to.
A traveler on the pathway as well. He lives right off of it, so we pass each other occasionally.
Thank you all for having that.
Well, I know how to have an accidental intersection with you now. Thank you very much for that information. It's logged. Any questions? We are here to answer any questions, but we really would like to extend to you a sincere invitation. The frontline workers, there's, there's a deadly, there's an important question that travelers ask, and that is, what is there to do in Abingdon or Washington County? And there's a couple of opposite reactions that you get to that. One is, not much, and those are deadly words. And the other is, you wouldn't believe what we have to do here in Washington County. And our quest is that everybody you ask responds with the latter response, not the former. So thank you for what you do, and if you have any questions, we'd like to entertain them.
Questions or comments? Okay, thank you both, but go ahead.
I'd like to thank you for the Thursday Night Jams, because I come right often and enjoy that.
Thank you. I'm so glad you do. We have about, you got me started now, you asked the questions. We have about 400 to 600 people. This is family-friendly, free music. Our events coordinator has carefully curated our unique brand. It's not what Bristol does, it's not what the Carter-Fold does, it's uniquely a different brand for Abingdon. I think it speaks well for us. Thank you very much for attending. I hope more of you will come and partake of the free, family-friendly fun. I can't say that more than once in a row.
And Ms. Dearing, one thing I wanted to point out in the information you gave us, that each of the 22,000 households in Washington County pay $330 less in state and county taxes due to the income from tourism in the county. So I just felt like that was worth mentioning.
Thank you. And that is true. If, if, if tourism, if people stopped coming to Washington County, it would impact our bottom line immediately and definitely, and that's what the impact to each personal household would be. So it is a worthy investment of tax dollars. There's a tremendous return. Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you again both for being here.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Berry, any changes that you know of, sir?
No, sir.
Okay. So we have motion by Mr. Rush to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Pennington. Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven-zero. Next item on the agenda is General Business Action Item A1. It's A1 because we only have one, so, which is, yeah. So with that, this is a memorandum of agreement for Crisis Intervention Team Assessment Center between Washington County, Virginia, Washington County, Virginia Sheriff's Office, and also Highlands Community Services. So with that, I'll turn it over. I know we have several representatives here from ATS. Mr. Berry, you want to?
Sheriff Newman had to be in Richmond, so he's got his major here, major SNAP, and then Mr. Ashbrook and Candace is from Highlands Community Services, so I think they can answer any questions you may have.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us tonight, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Candace Miller Phillips. I work at Highlands Community Services, and I am the Department Director of Crisis Services. And I'm specifically speaking to you tonight a little bit about the CIT program initiatives that we want to bring to our community. CIT stands for Crisis Intervention Team, and CIT originated in Memphis, Tennessee from their police department after they had a, a shooting, an officer-related shooting in their town, or their city. And this has been over thirty years ago, and as a result, a mentally ill consumer passed away from the shooting because they were having a mental health emergency and ended up being shot because of a misunderstanding. And so they developed a model called CIT, so you'll hear me refer to that. The first CIT program in Virginia came in 2001, and that was by New River Valley Community Services Board. And then after the Virginia Tech shooting in 2009, there was a, a mental health reform that took place, and at that time, the Code of Virginia dictated for the Department of Criminal Justice Services and the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to collectively support the establishment of crisis intervention teams across the Commonwealth. So that was in 2009. We're talking about 2019 now, right? So funding opportunities have slowly expanded across the Commonwealth and finally presented themselves in Southwest Virginia. So in the fall, this past fall of 2018, Highlands Community Services received an opportunity to apply for two CIT grants. And we did just that, and fortunately, we were offered both and awarded two different CIT grants. So I want to talk very briefly about the first grant opportunity, because it is very much so connected with the reason that we are here tonight. The first grant that we were awarded is the CIT Program Development, and this grant is going to be ending in June of 2020, and it's not eligible for reapplication or to reapply for it. We're expected to, during this time, develop a CIT training program. It's a 40-hour core mental health training for specifically law enforcement. And it is also very, very appropriate for EMS and fire personnel as well, or even dispatchers who frequently are involved with the mental health population. So this 40-hour core training is going to focus on helping law enforcement recognize, understand, and de-escalate a behavioral health emergency, so that we are not involved in situations where there are shootings because of a misunderstanding, because someone has mental illness. That is something we, you know, we don't desire to have in our community. And so this is going to provide them with the resources and the tools and support that they need. This comprehensive training program is, is supported by this, this grant. And so again, we're hoping to develop a strong CIT program in our area so that when the funding does go away, that we can still sustain the initiatives of this opportunity. The CIT funding that we're talking about tonight is the second opportunity that we have available, and that is to develop a CIT Assessment Center. CSBs have the ability with this grant funding, we are able to partner and contract for services as we desire, as long as the requirements and expectations of the grant are fulfilled. And when I became aware of this opportunity to even apply for the grant, I immediately reached out to Washington County Sheriff's Office, because I would consider them to be our, consistently our, one of our strong supporters and advocate for Highlands Community Services, and certainly those that we serve. Without hesitation, Byron Ashbrook was the major at that time in his former role, and with support of Sheriff Newman, Byron and I began to formulate a plan on how we could partner with this initiative and provide a successful and safe CIT assessment site in our community. CIT Assessment Centers are designed to serve as a therapeutic location where law enforcement, anytime that they interface with someone with a mental health issue or an emergency, whether it's on a voluntary basis, if they're just patrolling and come across someone and they engage with them and they're, because of their 40-hour core training that we're going to provide them, they're going to recognize, oh, there's someone, they may need mental health services, and they need them quickly. What happens now is all of those folks are taken directly to Johnson Memorial Hospital ER and dropped off. If it's a voluntary situation, then they end up with a $2,000 medical bill, and then discharge planning is very difficult from that, from, from that location. In this situation, if we have a CIT assessment site, it's going to be a therapeutic location where officers, whether it's a voluntary or involuntary situation, like ECO, Emergency Custody Order type situation, they will be able to bring the consumer to the location and transfer custody of that individual to a CIT officer that is employed at that location. Okay? I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on that, with that in just a second. So this is going to allow the officers in our community to return to their jobs, return to their duties into the community that they already have, and they're overwhelmed with the mental health calls. So we, we were, we did receive the award for the CIT assessment site, and we are wanting to contract with Washington County Sheriff's Office to help us provide these services. A lot of CSBs have done it a lot of different ways, but we were very passionate that we wanted the best for our community, and we felt that Washington County Sheriff's Office would be that option for us. So at this point, we have secured a location for the CIT Assessment Center, which will be on 614 Campus Drive. Okay? That is where we are actively doing some renovations and remodeling the property. We are going to be, we're very proud of that location. We have also, with the grant funding, hired a CIT coordinator, someone who's going to be running this entire project, which is Byron Ashbrook. He is now a Highlands Community Services employee, and we are very grateful to have him on board with us, helping to get this up and running. We have also, we will be allowed to hire two prescreeners, which are your mental health clinicians who will be providing the emergency evaluations. We've also been allowed to hire two CIT officers, and this is where Washington County comes into play. The CIT officers will be hired and employed by the Sheriff's Office. They will not be employees of the Highlands Community Services. Law enforcement is not our business, so we're going to contract with the best. And that is what the MOA is about, that is in front of you tonight. Any questions that you have specifically about that exchange of funds? Basically, Highlands is going to reimburse Washington County Sheriff's Office for the expenses of those officers, and there is some specifics laid out in that MOA, and Major Snap is here tonight to be able to answer any specific questions you have about that. But I want to say that the CIT officers that we are going to have at the CIT Assessment Site, how is this going to benefit our community? This is going to allow officers in our local agencies, Damascus, Glade, Bristol, Abingdon, and Washington County, all these law enforcement officers, if they are interfaced with a, a consumer that they believe to be mentally ill, whether it's a voluntary or involuntary situation, what this is going to look like is that they will bring the person to the CIT Assessment Site, and we will do our best to evaluate them and serve and meet their needs in that therapeutic location in lieu of driving them to the ER, dropping them off, being poked and prodded with lab work and expensive doctor bills. Okay? So it's also going to save a tremendous amount of time with these officers, because if we're in an emergency custody order situation, you can detain someone for eight hours per individual. We, we assess over 100 emergency custody orders per year in our catchment area alone. So eight hours per 100 people, that's a lot of hours that law enforcement is spending in the emergency room, just sitting there watching someone. In addition to that, we have wrote into the, the contract that the CIT officers will also be allowed to do some TDO transports. I know the sheriff speaks about that, because it is very exhausting on resources, and we are going to be able to hopefully provide some local transports within about 35 miles, because we don't want our CIT officers in Virginia Beach in case another person needs to come in and be seen at the assessment. to come in and be seen at the assessment site. So, we're trying to help within reason, so that also is going to help with resources in Washington County with the officers. And first and foremost, of course, from my perspective, is the consumer's experience will also be significantly positively impacted by having a more therapeutic process. So, if I am someone that needs to be assessed, and I've come into contact with law enforcement, I'm going to be transferred over to a CIT officer who has been trained to deal with my type... The issues that I deal with every day. And so, this person is going to stay with this person to the end of that assessment. And so, we're really grateful to have this opportunity in our community and hopeful to have your support. I'm going to hand this over to Major SNAP, if you have any questions specifically about the MOA, or if you have any questions of me.
Question?
Sorry, I have a question. Going forward, what is the duration of the grants? Do you think they'll continue year after year after year?
Yes. So, the first grant, the program development, which is the one that Byron is going to be doing, the 40-hour training, law enforcement, we're hoping to train 75 officers a year. That expires June 2020. The grant funding will go away. But we're hoping that through these grant dollars, we're going to be able to retain the resources that we need to... We will... Our plan is absolutely to continue to sustain that training. The most important one is the assessment site, and the grant funding for that is renewable. We were approved through June of 2020, and then there is an application process probably, you know, earlier in the year of 2020, that we could reapply for additional funding. And I will say that there are 38 CIT programs currently in the Commonwealth, and every one that is following the rules and following the guidelines in the grant, they are being renewed every year. So... And typically, what we are seeing is that the programs are just expanding. They're getting larger. Right now, with our specific program, the funding that has been allowed only allows us to hire two officers and two prescreeners, and we're going to stay open seven days a week, but we're only able to stay open 10 to 13 hours. So, next time that we're able to apply, we hope to see that just get... Just grow more officers, more prescreeners, and extend to where we're 24 hours, hopefully. So...
So, you like have more prescreeners, because the officers are being trained? Or are you thinking about you'd be hiring more officers to fill this position?
To fill the positions. So, we want to be able to stay open 24 hours, and right now, the funding only allows for 10 to 13 hours a day. So, in order... In order to have a successful CIT program and to keep your doors open, you have to have a prescreener and a CIT officer together at all times. They're partners. And there's not enough hours. Can't work with these two people all the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. It looks... It's very, very optimistic with additional funding to continue.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you both, or all three of you, actually. All right. With that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the agreement and authorize the county administrator's assignment on behalf of the county.
Okay. So, we have motion by Mr. McCall. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pennington. Discussion? Comments? Questions?
I've got a comment. You know, we have a drug problem. And from what I've noticed, a lot of these one-time grants are kind of like a drug. They come in and, "Oh, try this. It's going to be good. This will be good for your community." And then, the money runs out, and we get stuck paying for it. And it's my fourth year on the board. I don't know anything that we've got a grant for, one-time grant. This will be renewed. And then, when it runs out, we don't renew it. And I'm sure all these things are good, but when we vote for this, I think we need to think, how are we going to pay for this down the road?
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? Six opposed. One. The motion carries 6-1, with Mr. Copenhagen opposing. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, Board Member Reports. So, we'll start on that side. Mr. Rush?
Chairman, I visited the Taylor's Valley community on Thursday evening last week, and the Green Cove Community Center on Friday morning, and the Conrook Community Center on Monday evening, which was my wife's birthday. I had a challenging group of folks that...
Do you want to report that, that you were working on your wife's birthday?
Well, you know, I told that group in Conrook that because it was my wife's birthday and I was there, and I had given my wife a pressure washer for her birthday, that there was nothing...
Unromantic.
There was nothing that they could do to me that I was afraid of. Mr. Chairman, that's the end of my report.
I'm going to turn off your microphone, because I don't want you to get in trouble. Yeah. All right. Are you done? Okay. Mr. Copenhagen.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I can't talk back. The Facilities Committee met, and, you know, we talked about the standard things, courthouse, the community centers, other things, and roofs. Nothing major.
All right. Mr. Pennington?
Along with Mr. McCall, Ms. Mays, I attended Mount Rogers Planning Commission 50th Year Celebration with dinner and a very good crowd from all over southwest Virginia, really. It's... Mount Rogers Planning Commission does a lot for... Pleasure to serve on that commission as well.
Okay.
All have to.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended a Joint Economic Development Committee meeting with members of the IDA and this board with Steve Johnson regarding updates on the Pinnacle. And as Mr. Pennington said, I attended the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission 50th Anniversary and Annual Business Meeting, and that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. McCall?
Yes, sir. I also attended the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission meeting, and... But the good thing is, Mr. Berry and I attended the regional jail meeting this morning, and it's rare you can say anything good about the regional jail.[1214.26][1214.26](laughter) But we did. Right now, we're averaging 760 inmates at the Abingdon Jail up here. 231 of those are ours from July to February, and that was a decrease of 31 inmates. We... Our population is 13 and 1/2% of what is in this jail up here. But the good news is that we have some new numbers on a reconciliation for the coming year. We current budgeted for 218,500. The new number is 386,476, so it adds new funds of 167,967. So, we have a total new funds that we have is 261,694, and that's to the good. That's money we will have to come back, that we'll... It'll help our budget for this year.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Ball?
I attended the Facilities Committee meeting on March 27th. Then, I attended an event at John S. Battle High School. And then, on April 5th, I attended a tour at the William King Art Center with Ms. White and Mr. Thomas, toured the facility, and then they told me about some of the things coming forward. And lastly, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved with the... With our... The main course of our meeting tonight, being the joint meeting concerning the sewer service to the Exit 10 area. I actually grew up in one of those neighborhoods, and there's a lot of people that I... When I grew up there, they still live there, and a lot of those people are having issues with their septic tanks and stuff. But beyond that, I believe it'll really help the entire area around Exit 10 to increase development and to change some of the... Just change some of the events that's going on in the area. Hopefully, it'll give the Sheriff's Department a good break. Also, too, I've always... I've often said that I would rather us raise our revenue through new businesses rather than through taxes, and I think that'll be one avenue that'll help us in that situation. But I'd really like to thank Mr. Cornet and all he did and his staff in getting that, and then thank the Abingdon Town Council and Mr. Vitam, and also Morgan Griffiths Office. They had a hand in getting us that grant, and I'm sure that his aide will be glad that we got the grant, so they won't have to hear from me anymore. So... But again, thanks to everyone that had a hand in doing that, and I think it'll be a great benefit to our whole area, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. I also attended the Joint Economic Development Committee meeting. I attended a BBU meeting. And then, the last thing I'll say is, we... Along those lines, we've got a water project going on around 700 in my district, and Mr. Mullins is out there, and he's modest about it, but he had a big part in that, going door-to-door and getting user agreements. So, it's pretty neat to know that they're actually digging holes and putting water in the ground, and that's really going to make a difference to a lot of those folks out there that didn't have access to county water. Some of them had wells, good wells, but some of them were not so good. And so, I appreciate, except he's modest, but I appreciate his efforts, and again, thanks to the Service Authority, Mr. Cornet, and their board. Some of it was grant money, but a lot of it, they're having to carry that debt service to put those water lines in the ground. So, with that...
Mr. Chairman, can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Because when you mentioned dirt, my mind just went off.[1451.24][1451.24](laughter) There is equipment and dirt...
I'm scared as to what you're going to say.[1456.51][1456.51](laughter)
Good news. It really is. There is equipment and dirt at the Spayside site, and it is underway.
All right. Yes, sir. That's right.
And they also have a Facebook page, anybody...
Yep.
...at the Glade location and...
Good deal. All right.
And we'll be advertising jobs soon.
All right. Put your microphone.
I'm finished.
All right.[1483.65][1483.65](laughter) And we do have a... We do have a... An event coming up, don't we, Mr. Berry?
Mr. Chairman, yes. April the 18th at 11:00 AM will be a... We're calling it kind of informal, but a groundbreaking... This board, the SWF Authority, and I've confirmed the county administrator, Smith County, and three of his board members to do a little groundbreaking, probably right in front of that new equipment that showed up over the weekend, Mr. Copenhagen. So, next Thursday at 11:00 AM.
Okay.
In Highlands Business Park.
All right. With that, I'll go ahead and segue to board information reminders.
That's where you were heading.
Yep. That's where I was headed anyway, so you're good.
On March 28th, Mr. Snoggers and I attended the kickoff for Spayside at their invitation at the facility in Smith County with all their vendors, or all their contractors. And I think Mr. Copenhagen heard this too, but they planned to have the Staveville open in August, which is in Highlands Business Park, and they'll have the Coop Ridge in the old Marilla Building in Smith County open in December. So, they're going to move quick. They're going to create jobs in both their county and Smith County this calendar year, so I think that's a huge positive, and thanks to all your support to make that happen. And last but not least, you recall that budget item I asked you about, about regionalism and that figure of 20,000, just because I didn't know any better? We've since got information from all of our friends in Tennessee, and you probably saw it on the news. Johnson City's going to take the procurement lead, but they believe, right now, there's going to be at least 10 partners to split that $48,000 cost, maybe more. But they've asked us if this county could support at the level of $4,600. So, I'm sharing that as information, also sharing that I believe, since we're so late in the budget year, and some money's left in Ms. Bonham's economic development budget for prospect development, which I think rebranding our region is kind of prospect development. If the board does not have any problem with it, I think it's still in tune with your appropriation of funds for her department, is we pull that $4,600 and be a financial contributor and also a meeting with them monthly to buy into this regional branding that'll include Washington County. So, if you don't have any problem with that, I think I'd like to use those funds, and it does meet, and I've talked to Ms. Copenhagen, the purpose of those funds, you appropriate it, because it is tied directly to economic development, so...
So, consensus? We don't need a board vote, because it's within the purview of our budget? Okay.
But I want to make you aware of it and be transparent that that's how we're going to use those $4,600, and I think it's money well spent.
So, that line item for 20,000 for 2019, 2020?
Not needed.
Not needed, so that'll go into...
You already put it in the contingency fund.
Oh, okay. We had already put it in reserve for contingency.
For that purpose.
Perfect. Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Great. Nothing else? All right. Ms. Phillips? Ms. Rollin? Ms. Copenhagen? You've been awfully quiet.[1663.51][1663.51](laughter) All right. All right. The next item on the agenda, then, will be a closed meeting. So, this will be a request to convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3 for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, more specifically for consideration of acquisition of a specific parcel of real property and its improvements for a governmental purpose. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion that we convene in closed meeting. Motion? Motion by Mr. Pennington.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Copenhagen. Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries 7-0, and we're...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Participating in the closed meeting, I'm sorry, will be the board, Ms. Phillips.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Hill.
And I didn't ask her, but I'd like Ms. Copenhagen to attend if she would.
And Ms. Copenhagen. Those are the folks attending.
And myself.
And yourself, of course. Okay. With that, how about 10 minutes? McCall, and a second by Mr. Pennington, and a favorable vote. The board supervisors now reconvenes an open meeting. At this time, any participant in the closed meeting who believes that there was departure from the requirement of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act during the closed meeting, please state the substance of the departure that you believe has taken place.
Hearing no such statements, a move that we certify the closed meeting in accordance with the requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. By vote in favor of this motion, each member certifies that the closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, and that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and identified in the motion by which the closed meeting